Hello and welcome to a special edition of Community Forum. My name is Joseph Feaster, I'm the host of the program. And it's special because I have with me today the candidates for the Stoughton School Committee. They are here to give you an opportunity for, to hear what their issues are, to hear what, why they are running for office, and to let you get a sense of who they are and what they will do if they are elected by you to serve this term as members of the school committee. I do have with me the chairman of the school committee, an incumbent, Dr. Erdem Yural, is my guest. I also have, and he, this is his, running for his third term, serving as a member of the school committee. And I have Molly Cochran, an attorney here in Stoughton, children in the Boston, excuse me, I'm thinking I'm in Boston, in Stoughton Public Schools, as well as Dr. Erdem does as well. And she is, this is her first run for the school committee, so, welcome to you both.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much for having us.
I am going to, I'm going to give an opportunity, I'm going to let longevity over gender at this particular point in time.
You're talking about age before building?
Well, I'm being kind today, Dr. Erdem, I said I said to you with longevity. But if, if you like, why don't you, I want to give each of you an opportunity to speak to our viewing audience and give them a sense of why you're running, and also your two-minute statement. So, let me just explain to the audience what we're going to be doing here, first and foremost. We're going to have an opportunity, in order to first and foremost, have the candidates give a two-minute statement. After that, I will ask some questions about topics related to the school system, and to each of the candidates, give it an opportunity to respond, may have some time for them to ask questions of each other. And then finally, before the close of the program, going to give each of them an opportunity to give a final or closing statement, so that you have, hopefully, over the course of this hour, an opportunity to get a better understanding of where they stand on particular issues, how they are as persons, and whether you would like to have them be in a position to serve our public schools. So, as I indicated, Dr. Erdem, your two minutes, opening statement.
The opening statement. Good evening, Stoughton residents. I will start by thanking Mr. Roy Cohen, Mr. Joe Feaster, and Stoughton Media Access Corporation for giving me this opportunity to speak to you. It is a great pleasure. My name is Erdem Yural, and I'm running for the Stoughton School Committee. This is my sixth year on the committee. Currently, I chair the school committee. I am married, I have two children in Stoughton Public Schools, one in the third grade and the other one is in the seventh grade. I lived in Stoughton for 33 years, and I am proud of it. In the past, I served on the finance committee. I am also a proud member of the Stoughton Lions Club and the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce. I am reasonably well-educated. I earned a doctorate degree in aerospace engineering from the University of Michigan. I own and operate an internationally-recognized scientific consulting business in Stoughton. I am the author of numerous technical publications and books. I am an experienced educator. I taught graduate-level engineering classes in the Worcester Polytech University Institute, also known as the EPI. I also teach continuing education classes to practicing engineers. Please vote for me, because I am a passionate advocate for improving the quality of education in Stoughton schools, rather than preserving the status quo.
Thank you very much, Dr. Yural, and now, Ms. Cochran.
Thank you very much. I would like to introduce myself to the people that I don't know in Stoughton yet. I am interested in running for the school committee, because I grew up in a home that very much valued education. My father was a college professor, he was the first one in his family to attend college. My mother returned to college and finished her degree when she was in her 40s, and also got a master's degree. So, education was always very highly valued at our house, and I am committed today to public education. My husband Larry and I have two children in Stoughton High School. They have been in the Stoughton Public School System since they were in kindergarten, and I would say that they have really benefited from some very excellent teachers and from a good education system. I'm committed to public education and think it's very critical for the town to have great schools. I am concerned about the leadership in the town, whether it's on the Board of Selectmen side or school committee side. It's very, very important to me, as someone who has invested in the town and who is a property owner in town, and that's one of the reasons why in 2012, I volunteered into and joined and was appointed to the Town Manager Search Committee, so that I could participate in that process and help the town work with a consultant to employ new town manager. I'm also running because I'm concerned with the direction the school committee has taken, and I do envision that there is a better approach out there that can be taken.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cochran. Let me just start, and I'll come back to you, and I'll be going back and forth. I want to, you know, being, this is your first, first time running for the school committee. What, I know you've stated in your opening statement, some of your reasons for running, but what do you see as the role of the school committee? And in the context of your saying, you have a background in terms of education, your father was an educator, you have children in the public schools, you've had an opportunity, you've observed it, you lived in the town. What do you see as the role of the school committee?
The role of the school committee is obviously very, very important, for a number of reasons. You know, under the statute, there's a specific set of tasks set forth, under Massachusetts law, that the school committee is responsible for. The school committee is responsible for selecting the superintendent to operate the schools, responsible for establishing and monitoring the budget for the schools, and responsible for collective bargaining negotiations. So, each of those things individually is of critical importance to the operation of the schools. I think the school committee also represents the town, and either presents a positive image of the town, or doesn't present a positive image of the town. The school committee, just like the Board of Selectmen, are very important, and in as far as operating the schools, in attracting new families to Stoughton. The school committee is also, plays an important role in interacting with other officials in the town, so Board of Selectmen, the town manager. The school committee, of course, first and foremost, has to operate productively and interact productively with the superintendent, but also the school committee operates and interacts with state officials as well, especially in a situation which we are facing in the coming years of potentially building a new high school. So, the school committee plays a critical role as far as its interaction with all those other officials. As well as, and I should say, finally, the school committee should be a body which is receptive to talking to the public, which is open to the public, and listens to families' concerns, because at the end of the day, they do represent the town and the interests of the town as a whole, and the interests of the families.
Dr. Erdem, you have served now for six years, two terms, on the school committee, and as you said in your opening statement, and that I know well, you have two children in the school system, and presently, you're serving as the chair of their body. I want to ask the same question to you. You know, granted, when you're an incumbent, you have a history and you have a record that one can look to, and certainly, there have been, over the course of your time, you have challenged some of the things the school committee has done, et cetera. So, the reality is, what do you see as the role of a person who serves on the school committee?
Well, the school committee role is, after the Education Reform Act of 1993, the role of the school committee has been narrowed down, and as my esteemed colleague says, the statute lists the three areas. One area she forgot to mention is that the creating policies for the school district. And the other area, she said, you know, the selecting the superintendent, but the school committee is actually, you know, is responsible for hiring and firing the superintendent and doing the performance review for the superintendent, or keeping the superintendent accountable for his actions or non-action. School committee is one of the ambassadors of the school department to the public, but I think my colleague is a little oversimplifying it, because the, you know, we have other ambassadors to the public. One is the, obviously, the principals, teachers. The other one is the superintendent and the superintendent's office. And our district is kind of unique, because we also have our community relations specialist. So, you know, we have all those. To me, the most important role of the school committee is, you know, we are responsible to the residents of the town, we are responsible to the children, the, making sure that, you know, the administration is accountable, because school committee is, nobody is boss. School committee is, cannot interfere with the day-to-day operations of the school district, but the school committee collectively is the superintendent's boss. So, the school committee, you know, interacts with the superintendent, and then the policies and the wishes of the school committee gets trickled down to the rest of the school system. So, the two important, two most important factors, the roles of the school committee, to me, is, you know, ensuring there is accountability in the system, you know, the children does well, not too much, so much public relations, so that we forget, you know, where we are, keep our eye on the ball. And the other one is the transparency. And we have done tremendous improvements in those areas, and we can get into that now, or we can done.
Well, since I, since I started the questioning with Ms. Cochran and I came to you, I'm going to come back to you with a question, because I like to follow up on some of what you, in fact, did say. In looking right, I agree, because I understand in terms of the relationship of a board, as in the case of the school committee and the staff, meaning the role of the school committee's responsibilities solely to deal with the superintendent, and the superintendent then deals with the staff that she needs, in this case, in order to operate the school. There have been instances where, you know, at least I've observed, and I'd like for you to speak to them, are there instances where you have felt, or either the school committee has felt, that it wanted to go beyond it? And I'll speak specifically to the business manager position that was here, as I watched some of the, you know, school committee meetings, et cetera. Does that, is that, did you see that as, as a role for the school committee with respect to that position, in order to interject the school committee into that process?
Yes, absolutely. If you look at the law, the school committee, there are very few positions in the school department, school district, that the school committee is responsible for hiring. If you ask me to name every single one of them, I may not be able to, but the business manager is one of the key positions that the school committee appoints. The other one is school nurses. The other one, help me out, Molly.
SPED director.
SPED director, yes. So, absolutely, the business manager is very important, not only to school committee, not only to superintendent, but to the whole town.
So, I want to come back to you on that staffing issue as well, Ms. Cochran. You know, again, I understand, and I sit here not being knowledgeable, and having not been knowledgeable, that there were direct school committee responsibilities for staffing reminds me of what it is with the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen have certain hiring responsibilities within the town, and I suspect that this is all by charter, that it's done. So, but I'd like you to speak to it, because as the observation was, that, because I believe that position still isn't filled at the present time, so can you speak to that, as far as what you see the role with regards to the staffing issue?
Yes, and I do think there has arisen an issue with respect to that role, and Dr. Yural is correct, that the statute specifically references that position as the one which the school committee has the consent to who the superintendent has to hire, so they have some role in the hiring decision with respect to the business manager. But my understanding is that Dr. Yural's approach, or his recommendation, was that the business manager, or the new business manager who was going to be hired, was supposed to report directly to the school committee, as opposed to reporting to the superintendent. And I think anybody who's worked in any type of complex business or organizational structure would understand that that is inappropriate, and that would pose a great deal of difficulty. I mean, clearly, it's a very important position, clearly that person should be available to members of the school committee for meetings, and appear to testify before the school committee were appropriate, but to suggest that somebody would bypass the superintendent in such a critical position and report to five elected members on a board, who are going to obviously switch to out from time to time as there are elections, I think is very inappropriate and very inefficient, and would really cause management problems within the superintendent's office.
Dr. Yural, of course, I know you'd want to respond, so I'm going to allow you to do so.
First of all, let me correct you, Mr. Feaster, we did hire a business manager, and he is scheduled to start on March 9th.
Oh, very good.
And Ms. Cochran is, well, maybe partially correct, but mostly incorrect. What I wanted to do is the business manager to report to superintendent for day-to-day operations, and to school committee for like a special project basis, like if school committee wants to assign something, you know, have that do it. Where did I come up with that idea? I looked at the other school departments, their business manager job descriptions, and so I brought it to the attention of the board. That was just my opinion. I brought it to the board, and board made modifications and came up with a job description. Again, this goes to the major premise, that you have to be transparent. Transparency with the numbers has to do mostly with the business manager. So, I absolutely think that the, you know, business manager and the school committee should have a good relationship, and that the superintendent should not be, I mean, school committee and the members should be able to speak to the business manager without getting permission to the, from the superintendent.
Okay, well, you know, again, just one question, I just want to clarify, on the issue of the finances and the budget, is that a report that comes through the superintendent or from the superintendent? Because the budget is presented, superintendent approved by the school committee.
Right.
In terms of the budget. And as far as you're talking about with the business manager, are the particular aspects of the contract that would then be direct conversation with the school committee? I'm just trying to seek clarification.
I can give you one particular example. You know, I'm sure you do the same. I worked for a number of large companies, and then you get, you know, bi-weekly or monthly reports about, you know, this is our budget, this is how much we spend, this is how much we left, you know, we are on track or not.
Right.
So, I have been asking to get those reports for a long time, and the superintendent has been denying, saying, oh, this is too much work. And then I kept on saying, you know, why do you think it's too much work? Because, I mean, if you don't have those reports to run the school system by, I mean, how are you going, without any compass and ocean? So, it took a change in the board and a vote of the school committee to make a decision that we require monthly financial updates. And also other districts, you know, the business manager does attend to school committee meetings, and anytime there is a question, the business manager answers it. This, I mean, our superintendent, I like her, but, you know, in my opinion, she's not as transparent as she could be. You ask a question, and then says, okay, I'll do it, and at the school committee meeting, and then she doesn't give it to you. So, you have to keep remembering to ask the question, and by the time you get an answer, you forgot what the question is.
Can I comment on that?
Yes, you may.
I just think that what has transpired in our conversation has pointed to the fact that there has been a fair amount of conflict and controversy with respect to the business manager, the business manager's duties, with respect to your interaction with the superintendent, and I think that, I think that perhaps it has been counterproductive. I absolutely believe in transparency, and every member of the school committee should get the information that they need to get it. At the same time, there has to be a way to go about that, without causing a lot of conflict and controversy, and without perhaps the school committee overreaching what is their appropriate role.
I think you are mistaken, Molly, with all due respect, because there is no controversy, because the issue has been resolved. So, I mean, the school committee voted, maybe when you get elected, or if you get elected, you want to go back to the old system of not having a direct access to school committee members, to the business manager. All the power to you, but the, you know, there is a job description has been hammered out. The issue of superintendent agreed, the school committee voted on it, so there is no issue. I mean, what I want as a school committee member doesn't matter, the important thing is what the school committee as a whole wants to do.
Can I just make one final point on the issue? I'm sorry, Mr. Feaster.
I should have put some shock repellent. I got two lawyers here against me.
No, with respect to the issue of...
I'm just the host and the moderator, I'm the referee, Dr. Yural.
With respect to the issue of, has there been conflict and controversy, I would just refer the public to looking at the board meeting minutes from last spring, including the ones on May 28th, and there were issues with respect to the issue of the business manager and your, your interaction with the business manager. I will leave it at that. But it was discussed openly at that meeting, and I think people might find that informative, the May 28th meeting.
Let's talk about, you know, Dr. Yural raised the issue of financial oversight and accountability. And, you know, I'm a strong believer in budgets, and receiving, I believe, budgets or planning documents, et cetera. I guess this question comes to you, Ms. Cochran, because I believe I started, I had, you were responding to something that Dr. Yural's question.
Two minutes back and forth.
And so, but let's talk about your views with regards to the whole budgetary process. And I'm going to ask a question to you, and then, Dr. Yural, I'm going to ask the same question back to you.
Sure.
Thank you. I would just begin by saying that I think as a lawyer, I'm very sensitive to the important fiduciary duty that the school committee has with respect to the oversight of the budget, that that's one of, obviously, the most critical things that this school committee is responsible for. What are the funds, where are the funds being spent, are they being spent appropriately? And again, is there transparency, which I certainly agree with. I think it's important in the budget process to have a good dialogue with the superintendent about every line item on the budget, to make sure that funds are being expended appropriately. If there's anything that's dramatically different from one year to the next, of course, there should be a dialogue about why that is going on. If there's a request for administrative funds to be increased, that should be looked at critically and carefully, but respectfully, too, to listen to the administration as to why they might need something new that they have not needed in the past. And it requires a lot of education, quite frankly, on the part of the school committee. We don't necessarily know, especially for new to the committee, all the educational elements that go into the budget. So, we need to, we educate ourselves. But it's important to pay attention, not just to that year, but to have a sense of, is this a sustainable budget from one year to the next? And obviously, that spills into the issue with the collective bargaining agreement as well, that you have to keep in mind the overall school budget, you have to keep in mind the overall town budget, and whether certain elements of the budget, not just, do we have the money this year to do it, but what path are we going down, and is this going to be sustainable? And I do, and I do think you have to bear in mind a balanced approach between the needs of the teachers' union and what the teachers' union requests, and actually gains out of collective bargaining, and what the needs of the administration is as well.
Dr. Yural, in terms of the budgetary process, and I know you've operated with that quite a bit, so I want to...
I just ask you to clarify, you're talking about budget oversight or the development of the budget?
Both. I mean, I'm talking about, I'm talking about both. I know the, I'm obviously being a town meeting representative, I see how the budgetary process comes to us from the school committee, but I know you're there, directly involved, and you're part of the process of bringing that forward, so it's both oversight and accountability, and you can address both.
Right. So, the budget, school department budget development, as well as the oversight, is one of the key responsibilities. We mentioned three major responsibilities, is one of those for the school committee. So, we have a process, actually, when I first got elected, there was a process of budget development, you know, the superintendent would talk to the department heads, and then the, and then, you know, come up with some budget ideas, and then the school committee would go line by line on those budget items. And then, at that meeting, the, you know, like a few principals, and like SPED director, facilities administrator, people in key responsible positions would come, and then answer any question. Actually, they would present their budgets, and then if there are any questions from the school committee, the school committee would ask. Same thing on the town side, you are probably more intimately familiar with that. Before, when we developed the town budget, the department heads come and present their budget to the selectmen. So, the both the town manager, first the superintendent, second the town manager, did away with those processes. So, the department heads and the school department do not come to the school committee meeting. So, I asked for them to come this year, as a measure of transparency. It's also public relations, because, you know, they come and tell their needs, and then the public feels better about supporting those. But the superintendent denied, and we did it the new way this year, too.
Okay. Let's move on to, I want to, and I'm going to bring this question, starting with you, I'm going back and forth here, to each of you, an opportunity to respond first to the question. We know that there's been, for a number of years, a sense that there's a need for a new high school, and in fact, we pursued that route for a new high school several years ago, and were fortunate enough to have been selected by the school building authority in order to be one of the school systems to pursue the process of getting a high school. Most recently, in fact, yesterday, we had a situation at the Gibbons School in terms of the gymnasium.
Yes.
You know, is questionable, and engineers are there checking to see whether there is any damage, sustainable damage, but at least there was foresight in order to not have anyone to enter the gym at the present time. But nonetheless, this particular issue of facilities, you're there on the school committee, your thoughts on that, Dr. Yural?
About the high school?
About the high school facilities, facilities generally in, for the school department?
Well, we have facilities, a master plan, that sort of, you know, tries to phase in new facilities, because some of our buildings are so old, like this Stoughton High School is built in 1920s, I think 1923, or something like that. We got Jones School, this is maybe even older than that, I don't remember the exact date, but we spent a lot of money to refurbish that building, and we got a new roof, new electrical panel, I think we spent millions of dollars. So, that was, I don't know if that was on the facilities master plan. So, the high school is long overdue. It has to be done, and I think the community is, I get calls from people, and I think the community is ready for it. So, as you know, two town meetings ago, maybe two or three town meetings ago, there was a town meeting authorized to fund the feasibility study. So, the feasibility study is underway. So the feasibility study is underway. Owner's project manager has been selected. So then there is a new committee is being formed. So we will, school committee will be participating in the new committee. So things are underway.
Just one question before I come to you, Ms. Cochran, with the same question. What's the timing, Dr. Euro, as of right now, as far as the determination by the school building authority? What will, if you know, what will we as a community have to do in order to get us to the place where we would be considered by the school building authority for whether we get final funding for, for the school, for the high school?
We need to have, finish the feasibility study, which will take about a year.
Okay.
And then, you know, we'll come up with certain options. And then the option will be selected. And then, you know, again, that there will be a funding needed to start building the project. I mean, the location will be chosen. And then whether to build a new one or refurbish the old one will be decided. So there is a lot of work going on right now.
Thank you. Ms. Cochran, facilities for the school department? What's your thoughts, observations on that?
Absolutely. First, I would like to address the new high school. And I'm really happy to hear Erdem say that a new high school has to be done, and that's long overdue. I think there's been a failure of leadership on Erdem's part with respect to his role in the community and, and on the school committee with respect to supporting and recognizing the reality that we really need to have a new high school. My understanding is that when there was a vote at town meeting as to whether or not to fund a feasibility study, which is a substantial undertaking, that Dr. Euro was one of two individuals who voted against that. So I'm glad to see that he's come around. And he's now an enthusiastic supporter of something which is really gonna make, mean a lot to our community and really gonna take our education, our education system up to the next level. With respect to the timing question you also asked, which I don't really know, had to know the details on that, other than to say that clearly this is an interactive process that would involve the state, state officials deciding, you know, who to give the money to, how many millions of money, of dollars of money to give to. And I think it's important that they're gonna have a lot of trust and confidence in the school committee before they're gonna commit that kind of money. And I do have concerns when we have, you know, pretty much a breakdown of the relationship between Dr. Euro as the chairman of the school committee and the superintendent's office.
Dr. Euro, I'm sure that you wanna respond.
I'm, I'm a little surprised at the strength of Ms. Cochran's accusations. I mean, you are the officer of the court. You make statements as a matter of fact. Did you ever watch the vote at the town meeting? Or are you just going on what you heard from somebody? Is that a fact? Or is it a hearsay?
I wasn't there personally, but I've made sure I verified that statement with multiple people. And I would like, if you would like to tell the public what you voted, I'd like, you can, you can tell the public and correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, the, the issue was that I voted against that article because it was premature. So, because that was two or three years before the vote was... But I was always for the new high school project, either new or the refurbished. So I, I would appreciate it as a responsible person. You do not distort the facts for the, you know, for the reason, for the purposes of politics. And I would respectfully ask that you rely on the firsthand information that you verify. Just talking to a few people is not good to a lawyer's or attorney's standard.
Okay. I, the, I want to speak to you, Dr. Euro. I'm gonna raise this question with you. One of the areas that has been discussed in, on a, as a person who is involved with education myself, I always look at the, the relationship in a, in a, in a school system that you have your administration, you have your educators, you have your students, and you have their, and you have the parents. That's, as I call it, the four-legged stool. And in my estimation, in my humble opinion, it is essential that those legs of the stools try to operate equally in order to further the education of our children. Your thoughts on how we're doing as a system and what you have done from the standpoint of the school committee? And I have to ask you, is have, have done, because you're there, rather than, and, and what you might, if, if reelected, what you would do in the future with regards to trying to get parental involvement? I see it as something that is not reached its, its pinnacle in any type of way. What do you think is the issue? What do you think is being done? How do you think the school system is performing in that regard?
Is this coming to me?
To you, yes, 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 it's to you, Dr. Euro.
Okay. Very good question. The parent engagement is always, you know, difficult thing to achieve, especially, you know, with lots of working families. So we have a parental, we have instituted parent liaisons for different schools. Typically, one parent liaison works in two schools. But I was talking to one the other day. You know, we, so they try to reach out to the families. But, you know, right now, their pay is, they are paid like a nineteen and a half hours. So they don't really get benefits. And the hourly rate is, I think, a couple of dollars an hour. So this is a very important role. I think we need to, you know, strengthen the benefits of those positions. We have a community relations specialist, which try to reach out. Again, be the ambassador for the school department. Try to put positive stories in the news, you know, do a Facebook page, write articles on other Facebook pages. But this year, we tried something new, which is the school committee office hours. I don't know if you heard about that.
Oh, of course. I was on my list of things to talk about, but why don't you go ahead, please?
So again, this is, you know, it had like a multiple thoughts behind it. One is, you know, reaching out to get, get the parents engaged, you know, with their kids' education. Because if the parent is engaged with the kid's education, the kid always does better. So because then the parents know, you know, what to ask, what, what they should be doing. So that was one reason. The other one is, you know, show the public that the school committee cares about their opinions. So get them, get them to become loyal to the district. And also, you know, appreciate that the district is paying their, spending the money well. And then the third one is, again, to buy, bring support for the new high school project. Because if the community is engaged, it will be easier to sell. Because no matter what, with the new high school project, there will be a referendum.
How was the participation, if I may ask?
The participation, we tried, so this, because this was a new concept, we tried different things. We tried the police station. We didn't have a good response. That was in the evening. Maybe people were afraid that, you know, Joe Feaster is gonna come and interrogate. We tried, we tried the library, but we got snowed out. So library got closed.
Well, I've seen your ads in the Penny Saver. I've seen that.
We don't, we didn't do Penny Saver. We do, we are, we are too cheap to do a Penny Saver. But we put it on the newspaper for free as a news article.
Okay, well, yes, well, I've seen it somewhere. Yeah, yeah, I have seen it. Yes, yes.
So we tried the senior center.
Okay.
And we got, we got some response in the senior center. And the last time, we tried the Gibbons School in the morning. So it's, I mean, this is two factors, two, two dimensions. One is when to do it, and the other one is where to do it.
Right.
So Gibbons School in the morning was, we had a good response. So we said, huh, I mean, that's a no-brainer, why not do it in the school? So Mr. Soares is trying to arrange one, I mean, in the other elementary school, see what kind of response we get. This is a new concept. I think we started in November. And then we had a lot of snow. So I'm, I'm very optimistic that, you know, this will be a successful thing for, for school committee.
Well, I'll just say personally, any type of engagement like that, that we'll be, have to reach out, it just can't hurt. Molly, on the same question, Ms. Cochran, on the question of parent involvement, parent engagement, your thoughts?
Yes, I think it's obviously a very important thing. That should be on the minds of all the administrators, of how they can increase that and the benefits that they can bring to all the children and all their families by having parents feel engaged. Clearly, I think the school committee and the superintendent's office and all the administrators should employ a number of creative approaches and solutions to see if we could increase parental engagement. It does seem to me with respect to the school committee, open hours, and that's obviously a good idea. And there's a whole number of issues that parents might want to bring to that. I think the parental involvement and engagement is more like at the school level, like the schools and the teachers, the teacher of my child's classroom, they have to feel comfortable going into that classroom. They have to feel comfortable meeting with the teachers at specific events or meeting with the principal at events where parents are invited to come. So I think if you make that link there, then they'll be more engaged. And I think like with any other, other link, probably if you make the link early on, so in, in elementary school, if the parents feel comfortable coming into the school, if they feel welcome, if they feel that they have a voice, if they feel that they can really help their children. If they start in, start hopefully at the elementary school, then maybe they can keep that up all the way through middle school and high school as well. But I do think that's a very important goal.
And the other thing I may wanna mention, that this is, this goes to both, you know, community involvement and also the transparency issues, is that we did something unprecedented this year, is to put school committee member packets on the internet.
Okay.
So anybody who's interested in schools, or they look at the agenda, they see one item. I mean, obviously, we don't put the executive session stuff in there. But let's say on the agenda, you see a budget or, you know, the articles or, you know, something. You can just download the whole packet as a PDF from the internet. And then you just flip through it and then see what is the discussion is about. Because the agenda itself is not descriptive. I mean, I tried to make the agenda items a little more descriptive, but then, you know, some members didn't like that. So we do more sterile agenda items now. But any, anybody who wants to see about it, you know, what, what is that discussion is going to be about, they know as much as the school committee members know before the meeting.
One or two, and this question is gonna go to you first, Ms. Cochran. One of the things in the school system and one, and there are those who feel that the, the giving of, having special needs programs within a school system have an impact budgetarily, because oftentimes, versions have to be placed outside of the school district in special types of settings, et cetera. And the school system's dollars go with that particular individual. There is a, as I know, Dr. Euro referred to earlier, and I'm sure you're aware of, there is a special needs department, and there are special needs teachers that are here. What is your sense, you know, in, in the sense of this special needs program in terms of its desirability, its need? And, and what, if you were elected to the school committee, what are your thoughts on that? And I'll preface it, my own bias is, having dealt with the issues of special needs within my own family, very sensitive issue, very much concerned. And certainly, you know, so I come as both one who is interested in it, but also one who has lived it. So what are your thoughts about the special needs?
Thank you. That's certainly one of the most, you know, complex and challenging issues that the administration and the school committee has to face. My husband has spent most of his career working with special needs students. He actually works at a private school for, a residential school for special needs students. So we have those discussions in our family, obviously, in time to time, from time to time, and while the challenges that those students face. And usually, it is the goal of the public school system to satisfy those challenges in-house and not have to pay for private placement, which can be very expensive. I did meet with Heather Tucker, and she, we had a discussion concerning the school's special needs programs. And I will tell you, it was a complex discussion, because there's a lot of things going on, a lot, at a lot of different levels, starting from the, the students at the Jones School, who are preschool age and who have identified needs already, to, you know, children that they are at the elementary school levels and beyond. So it is a multifaceted program. It is a complex program. From what I have heard anecdotally, from parents who have had children in those services, they, there have at least been some satisfied, happy parents out there who have felt like their children have benefited from the special needs services. But there is a multiplicity of challenges depending on the child's experience and the child's needs. And I think it's something we have to be very vigilant about, about responding to those and being caring. And of course, it is the federal law. There, we are legally required to give a free and appropriate education to students with special needs.
And I will further disclosure, my wife is a special education teacher in the Boston Public School System, middle school. So again, like you with your husband, I hear the stories and the circumstances that exist within trying to provide those types of services. And it's complex.
Yes.
It's complex, and it is expensive. Dr. Euro, I know you're there, and obviously you...
I also have, you know, involved in this special education for my children's education too. Ms. Cochran is right, it's a complex issue. It's further complicated by the, you know, intricate laws of the state and the federal government. You know, with certain children, you know, you have to place outside certain, some of them you can do in, in Stoughton in the schools, in an immersion program. That's, that's great. So I, I just wanted to, if I could do anything about the, we, I think we have a good special education program. If there is any improvement that I could do is, there is a whole group of students that are, you know, very high IQ, but they have some level of autism spectrum, like the, you know, you call the executive function deficiencies, or, but they may be just developmental delays. So, I mean, from my personal experience, I know that our school system could be better than it is now. Because at other towns, some of them are much better, some of them are not as good as us. It is, it is a big ticket item, but, and it's, you know, like a mind is a terrible thing to waste, obviously, you know, we wanna help all the students. The other thing I wanted to mention to you is that in this town, we have a special education parent advisory council. That is required by law. It's a council, it's an advisory council to the school committee. So in the past, they were required to interact with the special education director, not come directly to the school committee. So one of the things we have done this year is invited them to come to the school committee, because that's, according to law, they are part of the, are we done?
You're never done, Dr. Euro. You're always on point.
I don't like to talk, Joe. So by law, the, if you look at the law, there are required, I mean, they are, we are required to have that organization. And we are so fortunate in Stoughton, we have few really dedicated people that do it. And there are meetings, they meet once, once a month. And usually, they bring a very interesting talk. They bring an expert about certain aspects of the special education. So it's a really great organization for the parents to be aware of, even if you're not a special education, you know, your kid is not a special education. The other thing, last year, there was a survey. You know, the parent satisfaction is really important for all aspects of the education. So there was a deficiency, I mean, not a deficiency, but we never had a parent satisfaction survey before. And then the special education parent advisory council, or we call it CPAC, was saying, you know, we should have some kind of a survey. I was a vice president before of that organization. So last year, the special education department came up with some kind of a survey. But there was a couple of issues with that. One is they were added to IEP. For those people who don't know what an IEP is, Individual Education Plan. So he knows. So that sort of gave the impression to the parents, because the earth, returning your IEP with the survey, so is this confidential survey or not? Are they gonna use it against me or not? Not that they will be used, but, so that was one issue. And then also the questions could have been better. So this year, CPAC is working closely with the special education director to come up with a new parent satisfaction survey. I love surveys. I mean, not many people return it, but sometimes there are really great ideas in there. great ideas in there that you could use and win people over.
Well, you know, I'm, I personally am pleased in order to hear that. I had the opportunity to speak to the CPAC in Randolph in years in the past.
Oh, yes.
Because like I said, my own personal experience with it, one, having a wife who teaches in an area, but having a son who is affected with bipolar, so therefore, had an opportunity in order, so very much interested in the area and glad to hear that both of you are, you know, are in support of, of that. And I hope that our citizens in the town recognize that that's important and
Absolutely.
in the spectrum of, for them to understand that it not only talks about mental disabilities, it talks about physical disabilities as well. And so, we can have a conversation further on that. Want to bring up a topic, and this comes to you first, Dr. Euro, and that is the one, you can recall that I, I came to the school committee meeting a couple of months ago and I had raised the question, I'd had, well, the superintendent and I had had conversations about diversity in the school system, and there was discussion about, in fact, there was a, some, a document with, a policy document that was drafted by the superintendent and Mr. Ford, that was presented and was discussed by the school committee. I'm resurrecting it again, because I want to get the views. I know we had the conversation that night and your views are already stated in the, I'm sure, in those minutes and those records. But again, just for this purpose is here, the diversity question, I guess one of my concerns is, I don't believe that the policy has been adopted or anything, just your thoughts on, one, the diversity, two, the likelihood of a policy going forward.
I think, you know, we are a diverse population in Stoughton and we are proud of it, you know, that's what makes Stoughton, Stoughton. You're absolutely right, I, you came up with a diversity policy. I think I, I really like to have some kind of a diversity program in place, because I'm also a member of a minority. So, I think, I think that's good. It's also identified by the Department of Education.
Yes.
The Department of Education in the year 2013 came up with, they did a district review program. We don't?
No, go, no, go ahead. No, just keep talking, Dr. Euro.
They did a district review, and one of the recommendations was that the workforce does not represent the diversity in the community. And, you know, at that meeting, we talked, that's true also for other departments, too.
Absolutely.
And then we debated, you know, whether, because the superintendent already has this district review in her hand, and it's a, you know, strong recommendation that you should do that. School committee does not hire any of the teachers, any of the staff, except of the four or five positions that we have mentioned. So, then the question is, you know, the school committee having a policy, is it really needed? Or the superintendent already has the authority to do it, because she's, she and the principals do that. So, I am in support of that policy. I thought the policy draft that we have seen was, you know, only geared for only one area, you know, one, like a one ethnic group or one.
No, it was broader, it was broader, but I mean, it.
But maybe, maybe you made it sound that way.
Would I do that, Dr. Euro? No, it, it was presented by the superintendent.
It was, it was a while ago, so, you know, my memory may be fading, but.
Well, I have it here, I'll give it to you after we close the program.
I have it, I have it in my packet, but, you know, if you liked, we can certainly discuss.
May we come back again, I can come back again.
We would love to have you and talk more about it.
Why don't I come back again? I want to, what I can do, because we're running out of time.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that.
Do that, and then I want to give you, you're probably going to have one minute for your closing.
Oh, no.
Because I've eaten up all of the time by the questions I've asked. So, if you can, if you can, Ms. Cochran.
I recall the meeting, Mr. Fister, when you did appear and talk about a diversity policy. I believe there was a policy in the works at that time. I'm actually disappointed that the school committee has not yet adopted the policy. I think you did a great job to explain the difference between affirmative action and the legal issues with that and having a diversity policy. And having a policy, I think, that speaks publicly to say that this is really important to us, that we do want to have a diverse hiring practice, we do want to have a more diverse staff of teachers and administrators, that that's a poll, a goal for us, it's a priority for us. So, I'm disappointed that policy has not already been adopted. And I do think it should be a priority for the school as the school goes forward and makes new hires. We're unlikely to have senior teachers probably on the higher steps want to leave their positions, but I think we have to look at the new teachers who are coming out of college, then we can increase our ranks and have a much more diverse staff of teachers. And I think one of the issues with that, quite frankly, is that we do have rather a low starting salary for the teachers under the collective bargaining agreement, and that may be a little bit of a hindrance or an obstacle to get, attract more minority teachers in here. Maybe that's something we could change in the future.
And I'm going to give you 50 seconds to give your closing. I'm going to go to Dr. Euro and I'm going to be, have to be really strict, because my program director is going to hold me accountable. So, why don't you give your closing? I want to say thank you to you both.
Thank you.
Why don't you give your closing now?
Thank you, Mr. Fister.
And then I'll come, and then I'm going to give Dr. Euro a chance for his, and I will, I will go like this when I need for him to do it. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to say that I would love to serve on the school committee. I think I have a lot of qualities that would make a positive contribution to the school committee and to its interaction with the superintendent. There is a broken down relationship now that is simply not working and that is counterproductive. We all need to work together. You talked about the four-legged school stool. I absolutely agree with it. That's what we need, everybody pulling together, everybody respecting each other. We don't have that. I think I have the ability to work in a collegial fashion with other people and to reach consensus. I did that when I was on the town manager search committee, and two of my fellow committee members who are also formerly on the school committee are actually endorsing me in my bid to be elected to the school committee. I do think that I have good communication skills and that I would work well with, with outside counsel, use them wisely, use them carefully, and, but be able to grasp the legal issues that arise with the school committee as well. So, and, and work hopefully with respect to bringing a new high school to town.
I think she ate up my 50 seconds.
She ate up two of your seconds, but in charge, you have it right now, Dr. Euro.
I, I'm looking for your vote on April 7th, because I'm the passionate advocate of, not advocate for getting along, but for improving the quality of education. I'm not satisfied. I, I think that we can and we must do much better. I was going to talk about the SAT scores. We are below state average. We must do better. I was going to talk about the ranking of the schools. We must do better, you know, just being happy and getting along with each other. Ms. Cochran is totally incorrect, you know, we do have a professional relationship, and then our superintendent reports to the school committee, it's not the other way around.
I absolutely understand that, thank you.
And thank you both for being here and.
Thank you, Mr. Fister.
We will meet again.
Okay.
Thank you.